We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Selectmen's meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded.
I took all that away.
Yeah, you did. I've got no script.
Okay, I'm going to do the script now.
All right. Okay, we have the minutes of the meeting at 2:09:15.
I think Walter wants to hold that, right?
Well, I didn't get your read.
Okay, well, hold it there. That's fine.
Yeah, hold it in the reason, Tom. I think I missed an item or two.
Okay.
So you can look at it when we can be ready for it.
That's fine.
There's others in there, though. There are other minutes.
Oh.
Not there, in the packet, behind that yellow. Those are all appointments.
All right. We have meeting minutes for November 24th. Selectman Andrew and Beckford were present.
Do we have these? Did you email them?
I did, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Well, I wasn't there.
And you weren't there.
I move that we approve as a sub present.
Okay. I'll second that. This is Monday, November 23rd, open session. Just point out, hang on, just the dates. Monday, November 24th, there's a camera on. Executive session, it says Monday, November 25th. Sometimes it seems like these last 24 hours, these meetings, but it doesn't. So both executive and open session. I seconded it. Any further discussions or questions?
Nope.
Hearing now, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the 2:02 minutes.
Those are Walters.
Yeah, those are Walters. Do you have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Okay. All were present. I would take a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I move to accept them as presented.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing now, I'll take a vote. This is a vote to approve the minutes of 2:02:15. All in favor?
Aye.
And I mark that. All right. And 7:15 is our first meeting, right?
Yes.
We have the data systems budget?
Oops.
Or we don't?
Next week.
Okay, next week.
I left that.
All right. Then we have the regulatory agreement. This was for the rental project at River Bridge. And it's the follow-up to the discussions that we had to preserve the affordable housing.
It's just this afternoon's emails about that.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw those. To the extent possible, in the event that the property is foreclosed, if you remember the previous.
Yeah.
Language didn't help us as much as we wanted. So we had council review it, and they toned up the language to make it more difficult for us to lose the affordable housing. And specifically, the language that's in there is notwithstanding the termination of this agreement because of foreclosure or the acceptance of an instrument in lieu of foreclosure, as set forth in this section. The project shall continue to be subject to the affordability requirements set forth in Section 2, which shall be enforceable by the municipality for as long as the project is required to satisfy the requirements for provision of affordable housing that are imposed by the terms of the zoning bylaw and the recorded development agreement between the town of Berlin and the developer.
Good with you, it's good with me.
Yeah, no, I think that's, again, that maintains the development agreement consistent, in this case, with the zoning law, because this isn't done under special permit. Okay?
Yep.
I think we need a vote on that to approve this as to form, to be submitted to DHCD. We don't have to execute it tonight.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing now, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have a letter to James Colley, representing the Reese Family Trust.
Just so you're aware, he's present.
Oh, yes, you are present, all right. And you have not seen this letter, right?
I have not.
No, okay. Well, the letter explains, and we can chat about this, we have a few minutes.
Sure.
The 15th, but I'll read the effective section of it. Our position is based upon relatively new language in Chapter 61A, Section 14, which allows municipalities to reject a notice of intent to sell land, which is based on an offer containing contingencies which, if not realized, will allow the prospective buyer to avoid the purchase. The statute requires that the notice of intent be accompanied by an executed purchase or sale agreement demonstrating that the offer is a bona fide offer. This is defined as follows. For purposes of this chapter, a bona fide offer to purchase shall mean a good faith offer not dependent upon potential changes to current zoning or conditions or contingencies relating to the potential for or the potential extent of subdivision of the property for residential use or the potential for or the potential extent of development of the property for industrial or commercial use made by a party unaffiliated with the landowner for a fixed consideration payable upon delivery of the deed. It's the town's position that the offer transmitted to us in September was not a bona fide offer consistent with this definition because of the contingency language in Rider A, Clause 16. In particular, the language toward the end of the first paragraph stating that the buyer may terminate the agreement if, quote, "the buyer is unable to obtain any necessary approvals" contains a clear contingency. It makes the offer explicitly contingent on receiving town as well as state and federal approval for the proposed soccer use. And we were going to issue this tonight. It's the pleasure of the board.
Yep.
Yeah. We can give them a copy.
Oh, absolutely. Take a vote to issue that letter?
I move that we issue.
There's nothing else in it except for a...
Second.
The letter to the Reese Family Trust has just read by Chair.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? Would you like to talk about it right now?
I'm here also with folks, NEFC is here today. I see, it's basically a quotation from 61A.
Yep.
At the statute. And the question then becomes the contingency. Exact contingency is potentially before the board on a zoning issue. We don't think there is one. I guess the only thing that we can think of that would be a contingency, we'll have to go back specifically to see the language that you're objecting to. I guess ultimately, the question becomes, and NEFC and the Reese Family Trust will have to discuss exactly that narrow interpretation, whether or not, you know, how we feel that definition, if it's definitively a contingency. And if there's something that would be potentially, that can be modified, if there's something the town is interested in, in the modification on that. I'm not really positive, based upon what we see tonight, what's going to be delivered without a potential contingency. We think that potentially, the purchase of the land, the contingencies on it would be before the zoning board more than the selectmen. What we've put forward is a simple, we feel is a bona fide offer, whether or not the town wants to purchase the property. The only contingency we could think of, if we had to go before the zoning board of appeals, potentially, and that's a potential, we don't think there's a zoning issue as of right down there. From our discussion in the River Bridge property that we developed prior to with the Sonny family, with the Reese Family Trust, which had many more contingencies, I mean, they were before the board numerous times, in town meetings several times to finish that. Our view on what was submitted to the town, we felt was adequate enough that we're not asking for relief on zoning, we think it's by right down there, especially considering that NEFC is a nonprofit. We don't feel it's not a residential, it is not a commercial entity going down there. The question, I guess, becomes is that narrow question that you called it to me, and I haven't seen the letter.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Obviously, we were going to send a copy of you. I'll just do you.
I understand.
Tonight with the snowstorms and everything. It's taken us a while to get that out.
Let me sign it.
And then you can make a copy. And I guess I would point out that when you sort it out, whether you can do it, if you want to, you know, you remake the offer without that contingency, we will act promptly on a 61A, you know, refusal. But my understanding of the thing, and I have looked at it myself, is that there's a considerable ambiguity in the zoning bylaw, that there are really two sections that bear on it. One deals with active recreation, which is not permitted.
Right.
And the other, which is nonprofit, which is. And, you know, I think that that's, you know, that's an issue that needs to be resolved. My own personal thought on that is that nonprofit is not the aspect of the use that affects abutting landowners and neighbors. It's the active recreation use, and that is actually the one that should prevail. But that's one man's humble opinion. And so therefore, I think there is a significant contingency. And I think that it certainly seemed like that purchase or sale would have allowed a situation where if the property use was, you know, had to be curtailed or something, you know, based upon your plans, that there could have been a subsequent adjustment of the purchase price. If, you know, and then the town, you know, would not have had an opportunity to refuse at that price. So it's not, you know, it's not just, you know, being sticklers about it, just it really seemed like that, you know, this thing could still move one way or the other, and it could move in a way that could materially affect the offer that the town was looking at. So that was the way.
As to the usage or the price? As to usage or price?
What I said was, as if, if, for instance, as a result of the contingency, the use was significantly curtailed in order, you know, for that to be done. I'll give you, you know, for example, if the zoning board of appeals, and again, I'm just, this is completely hypothetical. If they were to say that, well, you know, active recreation is okay, but if it's sort of consistent with school playing field levels and so on, and not, you know, quite the level of professional finish that you were talking about. And then they came back to you and said, you know, this is where it is, that seemed to me, under that purchase and sale, it would create the opportunity for you to go back to the Reese's and say, we were willing to play X at that, but if this is going to be, you know, a daytime, you know, grass field, and I'm not saying you'd be interested in that, but that I'm willing to pay a third of X, you know, and that was the sort of thing that, and again, we know nothing about it, but just the situation seemed to allow that kind of thing to happen, and that was the reason why. We felt that we really were not, didn't have in front of us something that was, something we could really materially act on for the town. So that was the thinking. And we're, again, we're, you know, we're willing to discuss it, and you have the rationale there. Okay?
So if we can review this, is there a chance for us to come before the board again?
Absolutely.
And have a discussion with us?
Absolutely.
In a short period of time, is it possible?
Sure. Yeah, we meet every Monday, unless it snows three feet again some Monday. Yeah.
It's not doing a job.
Which may happen, but...
I just wanted to just quick follow up.
Absolutely, of course.
I'm the president, NEFC, many, many...
Yes, I remember, you came in before, yeah.
So my question would be, if we were in agreement that we did have a bona fide purchase and sale agreement, a bona fide offer, and you mentioned you'd react promptly to that, I mean, obviously technically, 120 days to respond to that, would you make the parties wait the 120 days response, or would you be able to respond in a prompt fashion?
I would argue to wait, frankly, because there may be, I don't think the town would buy it outright, but might be other situations where it might tie into the Tyler Farm across the street, should someone want to pick that up and use it for cropland over there or something. But I think the conservation commission would really opt to go the 120 days, but I'm one person...
I would do it quickly.
And in these matters, I tend to be guided by the conservation commission. So, I mean, if the conservation commission were to, for instance, vote in five days that they had no interest in doing it, I would, you know, I wouldn't let it sit in the selectmen's in basket. But if the conservation commission said, you know, now that they didn't have a contingency, and if, for instance, the price shifted because of removing the contingency or something like that, if they said that they wanted it, I would be guided by that.
Also, I mean, I say we look at that 120 days, but, you know, in 30, 40 days, something's going on, it just looks like it isn't going to happen. We'd quickly make a decision on that.
When you say isn't going to happen, you mean from a conservation point of view?
Right, right. Right, I mean, we would just tweak you, you know.
Right. You're looking at conservation says we're not interested, we're thinking about...
Right, exactly. That's all.
Thought process.
Yep. But once, I mean, and when I said promptly, I was actually thinking, you know, because we always pass these things before conservation commission for a reaction. Once we, you know, my feeling is, once we got a recommendation from them, we would move very quickly on it.
We've been meeting with conservation commission, we've got three minutes. We fell out of line, so we're going through that process.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think that answers our question. Thanks for retaining us tonight.
All righty. Oh, thank you, and I'm sorry we didn't get that out before we were going to get that.
No, I expected it tonight. I knew we were going to be submitting this. We'll look at this, we'll talk, and maybe we can request Mr. Tetter to potentially get this back in front of you if we have other questions or specifics.
Call Mary, she keeps us very busy and would be happy to add you to the agenda.
She was wonderful. It's very nice to be able to get us here tonight, so we appreciate that.
All right.
And again, we'll look at this a little bit more in depth, and I think both parties, we're looking to try to move forward on this.
Yep. And you understand where we're coming from on this, and with that interpretation?
Just, so I'm crystal clear. Potentially, in the offer, the contingencies are the issue, and I understand, because we have exhausted ourselves looking at the statute since it's been, you know, reformulated. If there's more specific language in the purchase and sale agreement as to exactly what NEFC is going to do and exactly how it will proceed.
That would probably move in the right direction. Again, you know, my concern is really this. I don't want the town to waive its 61A rights on a moving target. That if there's a contingency that could change that, so that once we waived our rights, there could be further negotiations between the party, and there could be conceivably a lower price later on because some contingency hadn't been met, and this original, you know, purchase and sale, you know, was then either terminated or subject to renegotiation. That's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm concerned with. And that's, you know, it's a parcel of land that's near, you know, a number of other sensitive parcels of land. It's, you know, I mean, so it's, you know, it's not like we're talking about a gravel pit or something like that. It's, you know, the other, there's houses, there's conservation land, there's the river nearby. So this, you know, this is one that has some bona fide, you know, preservation and conservation interest to it. And I would, I'd hate to refuse it at 7:50 and find out later that you guys got it for 300, you know.
I see your point.
And again, I can't see the future, I don't know. But that's the concern I have. Yeah.
Then the question becomes, if there had to be renegotiation, potentially, we could put into the purchase and sale that we'd have to come back before the town.
Well, maybe we could talk about that. Yeah, that's, you know, I'd have to check, I mean...
No, I understand that. I mean, we're pretty crystal clear. I know they are, they're crystal clear on what they want to put down there.
Right.
It's going to be two soccer fields, which is kind of modeled after some of the turf fields have been built, ones in Marlboro and so forth. What's going in there is going, is definitive. There's not going to be a change as to what their thoughts are, because it actually, any changes would eliminate their purpose.
That's, yeah, that's probably the case, but I have to deal with sort of the legal varieties of what we're waiving and what we're preserving.
So we want to preserve your waiver, something changes potentially.
All right. Yeah, we could probably think about that.
I'm going to have to put our thank you caps on, and we'll be back before you folks. But thank you again for entertaining us tonight.
Thank you. Okay. 7:15. We have the, as I do. We have a meeting of the Wheat representatives for a budget request.
Representative.
Representative.
A hobbled one, unfortunately.
Oh dear, well, I'm sorry that...
Had a hip replacement, so.
Oh, man.
And I'm on the mend, so I'm good.
All right, that's great.
No pain left.
That's great. All right. Well, we had, as I think you knew in the communication, we'd made, you know, a number of sort of requests for, you know, information or for somebody to come in, and we're trying to wrap up the budgets.
What do you think?
Oh, yeah. And we had not had a response, and we have, like, council on aging, or, you know, buying a van and stuff like that, and we're thinking, is it, you know, is this the best place with the money?
I understand. First of all, I want to apologize for the delay of responding to you. Two years ago, United Way was, I'm the president of United Way Tri-City, we had Gordon Framingham, and Clinton, and Bolton, Berlin, Lancaster, and Sterling are part of our catchment area. And we merged with Wheat Community Services, they were on the verge of bankruptcy, and we took them under our wing, and we've been trying to stabilize and move the program I was not aware that you had not been responded to. And so when I found out, that's why I wanted to come myself. And first of all, apologize to you profusely for not having a response back to you in appropriate and timely fashion.
You can understand our reasons for...
Oh, well, my God, I mean, here we are asking you for money, and, you know, we're not even...
Well, actually, you weren't here asking us for money.
That's the first one, there, okay? The second stupid thing is that we weren't smart enough to get back to you. So, you know, we, that won't ever happen again. But, you know, in preparation for coming to meet with you, there's two things I wanted to do. Whether you give us the money or not, I wanted to thank you for your previous support, and let you know that we really appreciate it. I've done some research, and what I've come up with is, right now, I thought you'd like to know how many folks from this town are actually using the program.
Yeah, we would, absolutely. Yeah, who comes to our...
Yeah. So we have 21 families from Berlin that use our food pantry, not the café, but the pantry. Are you familiar with our program at all? We have two different pieces of it. We have, actually have three. We have a counseling component where people can come and see a social worker. We also have a community café where we feed the hungry six nights a week on High Street. And I just left there a few minutes ago. And then we have our food pantry, where we provide food, fresh food, frozen food, meats, vegetables, fruits, and of course, dry goods and staples.
Is this federal, or is this, I know that we have a food pantry here in this building.
Yes, you do.
And they were saying that the federal program is only out of wheat now.
Right, well, we, well, there's several different, there's me fat, which is a federal program, there's USDA surplus, which is also a federal program. We get all of our food through, from the government, through the Greater Worcester Community Food Bank at Shrewsbury. And that's where we get the food, except for the donations that we get, which are very significant from the private sector. They give us food to distribute as well. And a lot of folks give us money to buy food. So that's a very big thing for us as well. We have to buy some of the things that we get from the food bank. We just don't get it off free. They charge you per penny, price per pound, that you have to pay. The folks from, yeah, the federal program does go through us. The, you have 21 Berlin families that monthly use the food pantry. And that's not the café, it's...
Which is located...
On Main Street.
Main Street.
Main Street and Clinton. Then you have, you have 17 families that are using the community café. Six of those are actual families, and the remainder are individual people, senior citizens. So do the math to eleven.
And these are Berlin residents.
Berlin residents, yeah. Mostly senior citizens. They drive and they go to eat.
And how often a week is that, or...
Well, it's sporadic.
Yeah.
It isn't every week, every day, but for example, when it's weather like this, a lot of folks that are old and burnt out because of the snow. And then we have three Berlin residents that used our social worker in 2014. So we had 21 families that used the pantry, 17 that used the café, and these are just the regulars. These are not the people that come in that are transient, transient that come in, and they might use it once, but they don't create a full file with us. What happens is, when they come in the first time, we do a triage to see what the situation is, see if they are able to get food. The federal government requires that we check to make sure people are eligible. And, by the way, if we find that people are just above the poverty level, or even significantly above, but they're working poor, folks who are underemployed, not unemployed, but underemployed, and there are many, many of them, we have food that we get from private sources that we can give to them anyway. So we don't ever turn anybody away as long as there is a demonstrated need. Now, if they don't make the federal requirements, then they can't have any of the food we get from the feds. But they can take food that we get from other people. So that's what we do. We have a lot of, unlike, I believe your pantry here is limited in fresh food and is limited in frozen meats and things of that type. I guess my people told me there was a storage issue with some of that, and I think there's a direct link from your website to our, to Wheat, where it tells folks to, if they want food and hot meals, to go to Wheat. So perhaps that's one of the reasons it's on your website, and it's a link to our program. I have no way of really quantifying the rest of the people that come and use the facility. You know, I don't, I don't make it a point to have my people, my volunteers, ask every person who just comes in the first time. But I think that we'd be safe to say that there are roughly around 45 to 50 people in general who, on a regular basis, come and use our program. And anything you could do to help us to support that would be greatly appreciated. You know, we are very transparent, and we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We try very hard to answer anybody's questions, and we're doing our best. We're building a new facility. We have a piece of land that was, that we inherited when we bought, we merged with Wheat. And it's on High Street, next to the café, actually. It's a piece of land that most people bypassed because they didn't want it, so somehow we ended up with it. And we're selling it to a nonprofit development corporation, Framingham, that's going to build a building for us, and then we will be a permanent resident in that building. So in two years, by January 2017, our people will be able to come in in a very respectful setting. Because to be very frank with you, we're in the worst buildings that we can be in town because it's all we can afford right now. Okay? Okay? So they're not the greatest buildings. We need to, we need to be where the folks are, most of them, the ones that walk and the ones that, it's got to be on a main drag so folks that drive can get right to it. So they're not the nicest buildings. And I tell you that the temperature in the café tonight was cold. I think for most of the folks, too cold. So we turned the heat up, but by the time it gets up, you know, it is what it is. So we are moving into a new facility, January 2017 is the date for that. And we'll be able to serve people with more dignity and respect at that time. But right now, we do an awful lot with very little. And whatever you can do to help us would be greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you.
And I'm sorry again for our lackadaisical.
No, that's.
Non-response.
Nope, we're, we're very pleased you came in.
Well, thank you very much.
Does Wheat have any transportation programs or services?
No, we don't. And it's one of the things that we're hoping to be able to do once we get the new building put up is to see if we can work with some vendor that provides to it. There used to be an elder bus that used to go here to pick up people here in town and bring them to the hot meal program at night. And somehow that stopped. And we're going to try to find out why that stopped. It used to pull in 12 to 15 folks every night. Not all the same folks, but you know, and it would make two stops. It would do here in Berlin and then either Bolton or Lancaster, I'm not sure, they also pick up there too. So that was a big thing. And I think once, once we get a building that people, that's bright and cheery and people aren't afraid to go in, and I don't want to say that, you know, in a bad way, but I mean, where it's a safe building, it's a safe environment, but it is dingy because it's not our own building and it's not the greatest lighting, you know? So I think that maybe some senior citizens are afraid when it's dark early to go in. So we make a point to have plenty of personnel there and plenty of volunteers. But we are looking to see if we can't find out why that van isn't coming anymore. That's a very good point though, because.
And who ran that? Was that WRTA?
I think it did, yeah. I think it was the RTA, yeah. So we're going to look into that because it was a good service. And like I said, it seemed to be full a good deal of the time. So, yeah.
All right. Judy, do you have any questions?
Is there, now, is there somebody local now at Wheat in Clinton? I mean, you're coming out from Framingham. I think last year we saw.
Donna Jarvis.
You saw Donna Jarvis, right. Donna is on medical leave right now. And she's not working. But there will be a, there's always a person that's in charge out here. And we'll make you aware of that person's name. That person actually will be making visits out here and will be making normal relationships as we should be doing, as we used to do, as we will continue to try to do now.
Yes, we, we used to have much more contact back and forth and then it just kind of dried up.
Well, yeah. When we, when we merged two years ago, there was no contact. We found all of these accounts that people had given us money had been less languished. And it's, transition can be a bad thing, sometimes, and a lot of stuff fell between the cracks. But we understand what has to be done to make sure it doesn't happen anymore. And you will have a local person who will be responsible here. And in fact, you know, I will let you know that person, I will contact you myself to make sure you have that information. And is anything, you know, and also if you have anybody that you know of in town who isn't getting food and needs food, and I know you have your own program here, but you know, one of the things that we have found, and I don't know whether you've found this from your folks yourself, but it's a lot of times people who live in a community feel that they are embarrassed to go to their own community to get food. Because everybody that volunteers there is probably from the community, so therefore they know who's coming in to get food. And you'd be surprised how many folks that we get from Bolton, Berlin, Lancaster, Sterling that come in to our place in Clinton because it's anonymous.
Yeah.
Okay? Because they feel embarrassed or they feel somehow that it's not an honorable thing for them to have to come and ask for help. So we have two words that we use all the time, dignity and respect. And nobody works for me, nobody volunteers for us, nobody works for me that doesn't use dignity and respect with everybody who comes in. So that's what we do. And if you know of any folks that are in that position, and Mary, you in this position every day, maybe you would become in contact, if you do, please feel free to call me. You have my card. We will have somebody come out here and, and bring them food. That's not a problem, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a vote to approve.
How about, how about anybody in the audience?
Oh yes, anybody in the audience.
Have any questions?
Okay. Hearing none, I would accept a vote to submit the Wheat budget at 3,000, which would be level funding to last year.
So move.
I will, I want a second at Tom. Let me run this idea by you. I mean, I'm not against it right now. Having a couple of experience voting is something. Then a couple of days later, saying, why don't I look into it a little more? I would prefer to put it off until next week, but.
I don't, I don't mind putting it off until next week.
Okay.
But I'll let you know. I know how I'm voting next week.
I appreciate that. If I had to vote right now, I'd vote yes. I just, it's a matter of, I decided a couple of weeks ago, in ending the meeting, what I'm going to do on things that, instead of voting immediately, you know, just put it off and.
That's the old saying, send haste repent at leisure. Okay?
Well, just.
Thank you, I'm very happy with your presentation. And we very much appreciate your coming in.
I accept it to be inaccurate. Thank you, you did a good job.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mary, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right, the, the next meeting we have is ASABET Regional Budget Presentation.
Do you know, do you folks know these two gentlemen? You probably know Chris from last year. But this is Ernie Hohl, who is our new superintendent director.
Hi there.
Hi, Tom Andrew, nice to meet you.
Chris Loll, Judy.
Chris Loll, nice to meet you.
Welcome, Ernie.
Hi, Ernie.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Chris.
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Lynn Ryan, nice to meet you.
Lynn Ryan, yeah.
Chris, would you like to sit up here so you can hear better? She's from our finance committee.
I'll sit on the end.
Yeah, those are actually pretty good figures, you know. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Thank you. I don't mind at all, yeah. We got time? How are you?
Good. I don't see, huh?
You get quarters on you? No, five.
We've got to be spare.
Oh, sure. Yep. Yeah, we're trying.
We need that. Take, hold on a second.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks again for entertaining us to come before you and present our budget, our ASABET ballot. As Lynn mentioned, my name is Ernest Hohl, and the new superintendent. 11 days fresh on the job.
11 days?
11 days, four days, 12 snow days and one two-hour delay. So it's been, been a challenging start already.
We wondered who brought all the snow into the area.
Yeah, I guess it was me.
Wow. Well, welcome. Where'd you come, where'd you come from?
So, this is my second school district. I worked at Minuteman Technical High School in Lexington, Mass. for 19 years.
I was going to feel really bad if you came from San Diego.
Yeah. It was a, it was a nationwide search for, pardon me, but I'm originally from Lancaster, so I'm, I'm used to the snow.
All righty.
But thanks again. And so we'll be brief, but first I'd like to just let you know that in the darker blue is a student performance profile. In the first page, we've kind of broken down a couple of pages. The first page strictly about Berlin students, just a quick profile. There's 28, 9 through 12 students that you can see on that first page. These are the shots that are listed in which those students are enrolled in currently. It talks about some of the graduation plans and the MCAS averages for those 28 students. And then on the very bottom, there's some school-wide fast facts from the class of 2014. And that would be the entire school, not just Berlin students. I think one of the amazing things that I knew about ASABET, and I want to just educate you as well if you don't know, is that ASABET is a current technical school of 17 programs that offers students from Berlin a multiple pathways in which they can succeed. First is which, that they can go directly into the world of work upon graduation. They have the opportunity to start businesses through entrepreneurship type programs as well. They can go on to advanced technical training, which would continue their training in the extraordinary field that they chose over four years. But they also have the pathway to go on to college in that ASABET program for that as well. We do have about 12 AP classes that are offered, advanced placement classes that students can take. You'll see, and I'm not going to read every page to you, just think it wouldn't be a well worth the time, but you'll see that we have a breakdown on MCAS averages, the special education enrollment from Berlin. We talk about performance levels for MCAS. You can kind of see where the professional development dollars have been spent under the categories from ASABET. It talks about clubs and activities. One of the things that makes ASABET stand out is the amount of certificates or industry-recognized credentials that ASABET students can obtain. In 2014, I guess the 231 graduates were able to earn a total of 706 different credentials. And that can be anywhere from an OSHA ten-hour safety card to serve safe and toleratory to welding certifications in the metal fabrication and welding program. Some of the highlights, 100% of the 2014 graduating class earned past MCAS tests. We also implemented a new STEM in Engineering Academy for students in grades 9 through 12, which comes with an Engineering Academy certificate proficiency. ASABET is also, has been partnering with Quinn-Sigmen Community College, in which students can earn some credits into QCC as seniors through ASABET. And that's been a relationship that's gone on for a number of years. We have approximately 100 students, 9 through 12, participating in that new junior ROTC leadership program as well. And then the cooperative placement as well for the ASABET students is something to note where 60 seniors have been on cooperative placement, which is a work-based internship program. The majority of those being paid with the highest rate of being $16 an hour. The state actually does offer that program for juniors in the third term, so ASABET has opened up that opportunity for those juniors starting this year. So hopefully we're going to expand that co-op program. My CASABET, as I come in with a new kind of fresh face, is a jewel that is something that all communities need to be able to see that is beyond the 9 through 12, secondary education that we provide. I think that we can provide postgraduate students opportunities to retool and enhance skills. I think that we also play a role in workforce development for those organizations and companies that are around ASABET that could utilize our facility and programs at the school office as well. I think that you'll see, Mr. Loll is going to talk about the budget presentation for this year and that we've been fiscally responsible in preparing this budget. And you'll see that there's a slight increase for Berlin, but we've had an increase in students, so at this time I'll turn it over to Chris.
Well, thank you. Thanks.
I just want to touch base on the lighter blue book. And before I begin, just, just so you're familiar with our process and what we do, we start very early at ASABET. We start, I start meeting with our central office team, our administrators, our lead teachers, over the summer actually, in putting this fiscal year 2016 budget. So before the fiscal 2015 school year begins, we're already in preparation for the fiscal 2016 budget. Present a list of budget assumptions to the school committee in early September. And then they go ahead and a preliminary budget is presented to them in October. A final budget is voted on in December. And then the assessments were just voted on in early February. So it's a, it's a long process. It starts very early. There are a lot of factors, you know, based on contractual obligations that we currently have and some unknown as well moving forward. But those are some of the factors in putting together this budget for FY 2016. If you go to page four of your book, you can see that the budget increase for this year, overall our operating budget is 3.51%. This is our biggest increase that we've had in five years. Some of that is attributed to unknown contractual obligations that we have in fiscal year 2016. Our transportation contract, which is our third largest cost in the budget, is out to bid currently. And so that is an unknown cost at this point in time, as well as we're just finishing up teacher negotiations for a new contract beginning in fiscal year 2016 through 2018. So we expect that to be ratified at the end of this month. But in putting those, putting this budget together, those were two unknown obligations at that time. In addition to that, we've had an increase in enrollment. Our enrollment continues to go up and as a result, our budget continues to grow up. And with those students, we have an increase in special education students, which certainly has, you know, caused our budget to increase. And so if you add those factors in, it's a 3.51%, it's about a $545,000 increase in the overall budget this year. But I will say our five-year average, you know, we've been very careful fiscally going forward these past five years. Our two is, our average increase over the past five years is a 2.43% increase, which we, you know, you know, I think it speaks volumes to what we've tried to do. We start, as our enrollment continues to increase, we've got a lot of new students, but we've grown and been fiscally responsible as well. You can see that the sources of funds in the bottom chart there, it's the overall operating budget is $19 million, $45,000. 10.1 million is made up of state aid and other receipts. And then our assessments are at 8.8 million for fiscal year 2016.
For the state grants, aid going up much faster than the assessments.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so while our overall operating budget's gone up, next year 3.51%, the assessments have gone up just about 3%. I think it's 2.98 for next year. So we've certainly, while our budget has grown, we've certainly found more revenue and we've tried to limit the increase, you know, for our member towns.
How do you deal with the state aid since you won't know any final numbers?
So that's a, that's a good question, actually. So what, what we've done is, you know, I factored in, there's a, you know, what we've, first I wanted to confirm, you know, our foundation enrollment rates from the Department of Ed. So those we've confirmed. There is an inflation factor of one and a half percent that was given to me by the Department of Ed. And so, yeah, as of right now, we have to estimate what your minimum local contributions are. And so certainly in doing that, we've put together this budget, you know, looked at our expected revenues, make sure that we meet net school spending. And then our assessments were brought forward to the school committee that they voted on. So I anticipate, you know, with our foundation enrollment numbers that the Department of Ed has already verified, with the inflation percentage that they have given us and our increase in Berlin students, which is a couple, that will be right around, you know, when the governor's budget is released. Yeah, it's a little, it's a little tricky this year.
Every year.
Certainly is a challenge, not only, not only for ASABET, but all, you know, all regional schools now when you're going out and putting the budget together before the governor's budget.
He has a Luigi boy.
I wish. That would certainly be helpful.
That'd be, yeah.
So if you go to the next page, you can just see, as I mentioned, our enrollment continues to increase. We're at 1,122 students, which includes 62 post-grad students.
Just tell me about this post-grad.
Yep.
Thing. It's post-grad in a particular skill that they're going for, or does it prepare them for college? Is that what that, what's the purpose of that?
Correct. Well, it's, it's both, actually. So, I mean, some of our programs that have capacity, for, for example, the electrical wiring shop. If we have capacity in that, what we, what we do, our policy allows for one post-grad student per teacher in that shop. So if we have three teachers in the electrical wiring shop, we're allowed three post-grads in that shop. In addition to that, we have our LPN program as well. And so, you know, it's a combination of those, which is 62 for this October 1st.
Thanks.
If you go to the next page, you can see overall October 1st, 2014 enrollment, Berlin is. Berlin is at 31 students. It is an increase in two compared to October 1st, 2013, last year. So last year, you had 29 students. This year, I have 31, which makes up 4.17% of the operating budget for enrollment.
Are you having problems getting access to the Berlin students?
Why don't we take the Berlin out of them? The answer is yes.
The answer is yes. We're still holding, by state regulations, we're at least, we should be able to at least access the eighth grade list from the students that live in both Berlin. We currently do not have that. We also have not had access of the eighth grade students accessing ASVIT for like an eighth grade toward A.
Lynn, I mean, isn't that public knowledge? Isn't that public?
Can you get that from the clerk?
Well, in order to have students come en masse to ASVIT, there's a couple of things. Number one, we provide buses, or, you know, but they also need a person from the school to go with them that knows the kids, okay? Because we don't lose anybody, and we don't know these kids that are coming over. And recently, the last couple of years, that has stopped. We have offered to do a series of things. For example, on those days that there is half a day perhaps at one of these senior schools to Toronto, we'll say, send them over here for lunch, and, you know, we'll keep them for the rest of the day, and if they choose not to go, then they choose not to go. That hasn't worked out. So we've tried. I guess my major concern with it is, some of the schools like to hunt, will complain that a student will go over there and be on the October 1 census for the following year and then leave. The exposure that that student may have had to ASVIT is at exhibit night, you know, balloons, free food, robots. They really need, I feel, to get into the school and find out, yes, you're going to climb under that toilet, okay? Yes, you're going to have sawdust in your hair. This is, they need to view the shops in full production. So I'm hoping that, you know, perhaps those at Toronto will see fit to, you know, allow us to make some accommodation where the kids will be able to come over and actually see the school in operation. I'll get off mine.
Well, I mean, it sounds like an issue that ought to be resolved somehow. Is it the, does the school committee help you out on the Toronto?
I feel that it is a joint decision, perhaps, I don't know. I don't think there's a lot of support for.
They don't want kids going to.
They don't want kids going to ASVIT.
And they liken it to, well, if we do it for you, we're going to have to do it for ANSA, and we're going to have to do it for this.
For FUM?
For ANSA, the, at the Ansa Science School, and all of the charter school.
Charter school.
Yeah.
But my answer to that is, the reason that I feel it's important for Berlin kids to go is because Berlin choles to join ASVIT. They didn't choose to be a part of any of the other schools, so that it was a decision that town made. But again, I'll get off my soapbox.
One of my, one of my charges is to reach out and, you know, connect with superintendents of all the, in district towns, and out of district towns, so I'm yet to make that connection, hoping, hoping that was going to, you know, cross on paths of joint meetings that would take place, but, you know, those snow days, those are canceled, so it'll be, it's on the, it's on the front burner, so we'll hope to remember that.
Any other questions on your enrollment? Yeah, as I mentioned, it's plus two, and I'll just go touch through the rest of these quickly. But in terms of the overall budget, the next page, page seven, our net school spending requirements recap. As I mentioned, based on federal, state, and local receipts, we have about 10.1 million in revenue. Our required net school spend, spending, which is our foundation budget, right now we've got Chapter 70 state aid level funded, is about 12.2 million for our foundation budget. We're budgeting about 4% over net school spending at this point in time. So it'll be interesting to see when the governor's budget does come out in terms of state aid or whatnot, but I think, you know, overall, we've accounted for, for everything. I think this is a very favorable budget. Going forward to the next page, you can see the assessment information. Berlin is on the top line. The shaded column is the operating assessment for FY 2016. It's $459,085. It's an increase from FY 15 of $29,408, or 6.84%. And again, we've had the, the increase in those two students. And so the overall, the overall operating is the 459, and then in addition to that, we have, you know, we're in the phase eight currently of a 10-phase renovation project scheduled to end, you know, sometime the 1st of September, and there is a small capital payment of $7,870 for a total assessment for Berlin of $466,955. You can see that in the bottom right-hand corner. So, and just to give you an update on our overall capital project, if you flip to the last page in this booklet, page 12, you can see that Berlin's percentage of the capital project is 3.65%. And if you recall, when the project first was approved, it was the intent of the district to do short-term borrowing until the first principal payment on the large debt service would hit in FY 2017. So we are still scheduled to do that. I will say the project is still going on time. As I mentioned, we're in phase eight. We're scheduled to finish, begin phase 10 July 1st, and then finish up just about September 1st. We are, you know, under budget. Things are going, you know, very well, you know, and I don't have any complaints on that. It's been a very challenging project, you know, to manage from our aspect, to go through, you know, three and a half, four-year project during school, and not impact student learning, I think, is, is a credit to, you know, the teachers and everybody over at ASVIT. They've really done a fantastic job of adjusting. Certainly, you know, there's plenty of excuses not to get things done, and that's just not the case over at ASVIT. I think, you know, our building will be prepared to last another 40 years, and we certainly appreciate your support in that, and so I think we've managed that project very well to this point. So I think, you know, the, the capital assessment is the $7,870 for FY 2016.
Okay.
And just in preparation, FY 17 is the first year that we're going to get hit with the true assessment.
Correct.
It will be a hunk of change, and then it goes down every year as it amateurizes.
That is correct, yeah. And so Ernie and I actually had a meeting today with our advisor, and so that, that still is the plan, yeah. The good news is, at this point in time, interest rates are very favorable, so we anticipate, you know, borrowing, you know, on this bond, you know, I think we'll get a very favorable rate.
Yep.
Do that in June.
Yep. That's good.
We have the same contractor that was at Toronto.
CTA?
That's part of the challenging part.
Yeah. Don't let them pour any cement for you.
I must say, Chris has done very good. He's been with the school just a couple of years now. He's really riding herd on it, so.
You have to.
And I'm sure.
Yep.
Our new superintendent director will too. You can always come and hear more stories if you're, wonder why I'm so outspoken at school building committee meetings.
Go over and look at Berlin Memorial.
Do you have any further questions for us this evening?
No.
No?
No.
So we have any?
This information.
I meant Chris.
I'm impressed with the information that you've come forward with, and we're having some difficulty with the schools in, you know, Toronto and Berlin. So I'm impressed that you were able to give at least a ballpark assessment. And you work, you start work a lot earlier, I would, I would say, summer, and, and a vote, final vote from the school, school committee in December?
Yes.
Our first vote is in December, and then we have to have the, the final vote in mid-June.
How mu, sorry, I was going to ask, how much of your revenues are you getting from ASVIT at night? Is that still a big, I know for a while there, it was a huge program.
It, it is. I mean, I think enrollment-wise, I think it's scaled out a little bit over, over the years. I know that they're, you know, trying new programs certainly, but it's still, you know, and I think Ernie can speak to this, you know, from comparison at the other school district, but it's a very, very popular program. I think it's probably at the peak or at the top in terms of other vocational, you know, evening.
Yeah, I think, you know, ASVIT is so uniquely situated, being so centralized, and to so many different communities and easily accessible, that a lot of the programs, you know, I've been out in, in the towns, and I've heard a lot of folks, oh, yeah, my wife and I have taken dancing classes over there, and I've done recertification for this type of class. So I think what you'll see is, I think they've seen a little bit of a notch down because of the building project and some, you know, cancellations and things of that nature. We're going to look to ramp that up completely. Right now, ASVIT After Dark strictly, majority of it is geared towards adults, and I come from a district where I oversaw the community program, and I'd like to see community education grow, in that we actually start to entertain sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and even some of the younger set of children during summer and vacation programs, as well as some career, training-type, career planning-type programming to maybe alleviate the issue of, if the kids can't get in there during the school year, that we get them over there at other times. One of the programs I'll just highlight real quick is, over the weekend, the, there's a Boy Scouts group that was doing a merit badge university type of thing for metal working, the metal fabrication shop. So we're going to look to do that with the Boy Scouts, you know, and Girl Scouts sections in this area. Yeah, for a metal, for a, excuse me, merit badge university that would entice, or have a bunch of different merit badges that would be done in one, you know, one Saturday setting or a couple different sessions. So you'll start to see some of these different things coming out, but.
Has After Dark started already?
ASVIT After Dark has started, yes, yeah. They, they ramp up actually the week we come back from school next week, next Monday. But I'll leave you a card, if you, anytime you'd like to come and visit ASVIT, if you haven't been there in a while, be happy to entertain you. I'll even invite you to lunch if you'd like, but we can give you a tour of the building.
Excellent.
We'd love to have you see.
You got a card?
Yeah, we'd love to have you see.
Free lunch, Walter.
Thank you, sir.
He didn't say anything about it being free.
It's one of the unique things where you can, when you, I do have one. It's one of those things that you can, you get to see where your educational dollars are being spent, and actually see the kids, you know.
Yeah, a mixed open house, I would really like, but I don't want to, you know, to do one thing. Will you, you have any more open houses or anything going on?
Yeah, we have the exhibit night thing, but.
Exhibit night, yeah.
We're actually thinking of, I mean, that's right, I got another one here somewhere.
I'd like to come over.
Yeah, we definitely.
Yeah, that's good, we got.
We have them.
Yeah, I'm coming.
Yeah, we're all set.
Yeah.
Let me just give them all though.
Some spare credit cards, though.
You want me to put it in here?
The renovation project has interfered a little bit with continuing it, from my perspective, and some other things. I mean, the Department of Education and a whole bunch of organizations meet there. And, you know, from time to time, maybe the lecture hall's not available because they're doing the renovation or something, but hopefully, the project is due to be done in September.
Correct.
But of course, we've lost some school time, so now we've got some issues to deal with.
How many days have you lost?
Seven.
Seven days.
Wow.
But, you know, we were thinking of canceling April vacation, but you can't do that because the contractors already decided to.
Oh, do work.
And in order to meet our summer schedule, we promised them, what, the 19th, they could have the building? And, you know, that, so we'll have to come up with something creative.
Saturdays it is.
Well, we'll see how creative Ernie really is, because he's come in with some very good ideas and a very positive attitude, and hopefully, this will be the test.
Any other?
Can I just ask Mary a question? Off the top of your head, do you know the 25th, the first, when the first ZBA hearing is scheduled?
I don't.
Okay. Just because we have a meeting with the.
NCO.
Yeah. At, at 7, and we're meeting, so if I'm, you've already met Mr. Hul and Mr. Loato, so maybe you could be gracious if I have to, because it's a continuation and I have to be there.
You can be the hostess.
You can be the hostess.
I'm sure they'll be fine. I'll take care of them.
All right.
Okay.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Be insistent about the, the kids over.
I think it has to come from the town.
I was thinking that too, maybe even a letter.
What was like?
I have a, I have an ASVIT graduate.
That did very well there.
Yeah.
Was the right school for them. Now, ASVIT's not right for everyone, and that's why I'd love to see the kids tour, because if they get to see it in day-to-day operation, it makes a difference to them, and it may or may not be what they're looking for.
Well, I think the point is, is that you have different needs for different kids, and this is just one piece that.
One opportunity.
Yes, yeah. And they need to be able to see what that is.
Absolutely.
So thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks to meet you.
Thank you.
Lynn, do you want me to find out? We'll mail you tomorrow.
That would be nice.
What are they doing?
Well, he went to UMass, and now he's working at a farm.
Oh, is he? Sorry. Give him those skills. It'd be enjoyable, right?
But it was the right choice.
It was the right choice for him, yeah.
Glad to be.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
See you. So then Tom's not meeting tonight with FAC, correct?
Next week.
Okay. Which I probably won't be able to make, but I wanted to come here ASVIT anyway.
All right, thanks. All right, pipeline committee, you want to come down?
Should we wait for Walter to get back here?
Yeah.
So we can see everybody been here all at once. Can we see the device, the article?
That's, I think, I believe, these, February 17th, 4/42, yeah. And I certainly still have some questions about it, but. Is the, have these, is this a model that came from somebody?
This is an adaptation of a much simpler model. Mass Plan and, you know, various StopNet, et cetera, they're all asking the towns to pass some type of resolution, some type of article, you know, about this pipeline. And it just so happens, I'm on the Article 97 Committee, you know, statewide committee to preserve Article 97 lands, and Kinder Morgan is trying to circumvent Article 97 lands. Crossing Article 97 lands is vital to, you know, the construction of their pipeline, and they're doing everything they can to try to get around it.
And Article 97 are conservation lands, is that what you're?
You know, lands that have some kind of conservation restriction, not necessarily just conservation.
Yeah, I think it, it applies to all public lands, Tom, if it's almost a highway department, wanting to shift it to a school department. I think it takes a vote. I'm not sure, but it's more than conservation.
Okay, it's more than conservation. It's land that have been near conservation restriction, land outright owned by the Conservation Commission, land owned by a land trust.
So how are they trying to get around this?
Oh, they've got a, a team of lawyers. I'm not privy to all of the machinations that they're doing, but I do know that they're trying to get around Article 97.
Yeah, I'm not, I have to say, I'm not, Article 97 is very general, and I frankly don't know how much help it, it is, but I know that the state law does prevent the use of eminent domain on these, on these kinds of parcels. So that, that one, I think you can kind of take to the bank, but.
Right, but they're trying to get around it, and, you know, they've got reports of lawyers working on this. You know, we recently found out they filed for exporting most of this gas pipeline. The pipelines all connect either north up to Canada, south down to Texas, Louisiana, New Jersey, New York, but most of this oil is for export. It gets, you know, up to three times, if not more, on the European market. up to three times, if not more, on the European market, five times on the Asian market. So there's an incentive to sell it abroad. It will keep domestic prices high.
Sure. Well, no, no, I think we, I think we're all familiar with that. I'd really, because we're running, we have a heavy meeting here and we're running, short, I'd really like to focus on the.
On this.
I remember one time there was a tower company wanted to put a tower on top of Rattlesnake Hill. There's a little triangle there or something that might have been available and wasn't allowed to cross Rattlesnake Hill conservation land to put a cell tower up. So the de-article 97 is pretty strong.
Yeah, it's pretty strong, but you know, there are ways around it, you know, to get around it.
So what is it that we're looking at tonight?
So what most towns are doing is trying to get some article on the annual town meeting warrant, you know, protecting Article 97. Most of them, I think, are pretty weak. They just simply insist, the state legislature's to vote no, you know, and I gave this a lot of thought, and that's not enough. There needs to be a local town level layer on here that also protects Article 97 lands. You know, as much as we will pressure the legislature to vote no, Kinder Morgan is pressuring the legislature to say yes.
I assume you have a copy of a proposed article. Yeah, here it is, okay.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yes, I did, but I think longer than that. Okay.
Well, here, you can have this.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to say is, you know, it gives the town some leverage.
Is it?
Yeah, it's the same as this.
I gave, I gave Walter my copy. So this gives the town some leverage and it gives the town some instruction, and it has power because it's the people, you know.
No, I understand. Has, is this a model, this word with instruction, that has been used in other places? And the question that, the reason I'm asking that question is, I'm not really sure, you know, and I'm certainly happy to follow this instruction, but I'm not sure that there is an actual, you know, mechanism by which the town meeting can instruct the selectmen in this way. I mean, you know, to, to request, and the only reason I'm equipping with that at all is, these things have to go to the A, to the A G. And if, I wouldn't want something to get bounced back from the A G. because they say, well, you know, there's really no mechanism, you know, there's no mechanism for the town meeting, obviously, to vote budgets and all this, but to instruct the selectmen about, you know, an executive function, so.
Let me explain why instruct is there, because that was the word that most people in Mass Plan and several of the towns used. I didn't like instruction. I liked authorize.
Mary Ann, I think, you know, I mean, if we could.
And this is a.
Tom, if we could put it in as a holder. I, I think the word is memorialize. If the legislature wanted memorialize, if somebody wanted to memorialize the legislature to pass a holiday or something like that, so it would be maybe memorialize the selectmen to.
Or authorize. I prefer authorize. Now, this can be a placeholder.
We're authorized to do anything we want. We don't need that, any.
Right, but the, but the townspeople.
I would think request is a very good, very good word, and I think avoids.
They said last night was the reason that they were using the word instruct because that's what was written, is written in the constitution.
Right, but we're gonna have to use that word. You know, and then the other factor is, this can be a placeholder, you know, in the night of the annual town meeting, I can present, you can present to the moderator the wording exactly that you want. He will read the article and that article will replace whatever, you know, has been printed in the warrant, so.
I don't think, I don't think at the night of town meeting, you wanna have an entirely different warrant. I think you can make corrections to it.
But you can make corrections.
But you can't rewrite the whole thing.
Oh, no, no, it wouldn't be rewritten. It would be modified, you know.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we take this as a placeholder? Let's get this to town council quickly, because I do want, you know, I just wanna be sure.
Placeholder, send it to town council.
I just wanna be sure that we don't put out something that's just, that's invalid because of the way that it's, it's constructed. I mean.
Right, I agree.
To, to have a resolution expressing a sense of the meeting, I mean, I've seen all those sorts of things before, but frankly, I've never seen an article that was an instruction to.
Yeah, and I have problems with that, and I did go along with it because that's what everybody else wanted to do, but I.
Yeah, well, let's check that, and I think this is certainly adequate. I mean, I think the subject matter is exactly what, what, what you want this to be, which is to the protection of the conservation lands. And I just wanna be sure I understand that you're, you're instructing us to sort of want, it's, to one, ensure the continued protection of 97 lands, and two, to oppose any proposal to construct a natural gas pipeline through conservation lands, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And then, and then.
Do we need a motion? Do you want to motion it, put that on? I want to vote. We just, we, we, yeah, we just. Okay.
Right, you know, and if you wanna change the word instruction, instruct, which some towns have used instruct, I didn't like it.
There weren't closes on the night, so you got time before then, and then even after that. No, we could, we make, we make adjustments as may be required, so, and then you anticipate, is it a second motion to request or whatever, the state representative, the state, because obviously here, you know, I mean, you can see the, the thing that's bothering me, because you, you, you can't instruct the state representative, the state senator to, to, to vote in any particular way. You could request, you can indicate it's a sense of a meeting, and that's, that's why I'm a little, I don't wanna get something that's just gonna be thrown out, so.
Yeah, both of you used the word instruct. They actually had it sort of turned around. They had that part of the thing first, right?
Or they didn't even have the first part at all. They just had.
Yeah, Mary Ann, both our legislators are for this. Why don't you call them up and give your wording?
Yeah, I'll go talk to Harold Notton about it.
Sure, have him give your wording.
Yeah, I go. Now, I just thought of this now. The night of the town meeting, I'm not a Berlin resident, I'm on the committee, but I would need to send you a letter giving me permission to speak at town meeting.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the moderator.
Okay, I send it to the moderator?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just in case, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to speak. Okay, so that's that. Several towns are also putting on the warrants, the resolution that you signed last fall, having the townspeople vote on it. I don't know whether you want to do that or not. That was that two-page resolution?
That was just a resolution of opposition generally.
And you voted to accept that?
Right.
As select?
Yes.
Right, as select board, and several towns are putting that on as a warrant article as well.
You wanna be a little careful, Mary Ann, you and I and stuff, and a lot of people see the way we do, but the majority of people, although they're swallowing this energy shortage and stuff, and you, you're not gonna explain it. You could shoot yourself in a fort gun too much. I'd stick with, I mean, we got plenty of time to decide that. I just, just a caution on that.
And, and that, that worries me, because there are a lot of people in this town who see the thing.
Both of these could generate an hour of discussion on town.
Yeah, and if I had a choice, I'd rather go with this one.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, so.
We will, we will accept this motion, we'll refer it to council and with it, get it back to you to show you what comes out.
Right, and I'll check with Harold Notton to see what he has to say.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think just to change it to request that the state representative and state senator, I mean, and then you, Bob's your uncle, you know, it's fine. It's just, as I say, you can't, because you don't really have power to instruct, I don't like to use that verb. But to request, I mean, that gets you a sense of the meeting and you're fine.
Right, and I agree with you. Okay, I had problems about request. Okay, now the open house is next Wednesday. We met last night, you know, to discuss what we were going to do. It's gonna be like a trade show, so there isn't a whole lot that we will be able to do at the open house. We know that Kinder Morgan is sending letters out to landowners they want to persuade landowners that this is a good thing. And, you know, we'll be there trying to talk to landowners, telling them that it's not a good thing.
And I guess, and I had a question about that, because they mentioned, someone came last night that has been going to a lot of the open houses and sort of gave us a preview of what happened.
No, that'd be good, because I really haven't had much of a detailed preview, but.
Well, it sounds like what he said was around the outside of the rooms is, you know, your easels with maps and all this kind of trade show kind of exhibits, and the center of the room is just tables. And there you'd have the guys from Kinder Morgan, you'd have FERC, three or four people from the, from FERC, and those are where they're, they're wanting the landowners and stuff to come and talk to them one-on-one. There won't be any kind of like presentations, anything like that. Our question was, is, who do you see about asking whether we can have a table in the lobby? Because that's like neutral ground, right?
Why does it have to be neutral ground?
Well, that's what's with the.
You're a citizen of the world, you're a citizen of the United States. It's our public building.
I know, but that's not.
Are they renting?
Because they've rented it.
Oh, they're renting it, oh.
They're renting it, the, the night, and they're not gonna let us put a table in there.
Did you ask them?
Um, no, we didn't ask them.
You should ask them.
I'll ask them, you know. I have no problems talking to those people.
They'd be foolish to.
But there are gonna be people outside, from other.
Oh, protesting kind of thing?
Sort of protesting, and that was the other issue that sort of came up, because there's, there's supposed to be police. Now, we haven't, we, I mean, we haven't, you know, set up any police. Have you guys, or was that all just done through Kinder Morgan?
They would request a detail.
They would be detailed.
They'd be paying for it, not us.
We didn't have any to do with it. Yeah, we have to talk to the school about that. Okay, so let's see, what else did we want to talk about?
Yeah, you should check it. The school hasn't rented the lobby.
Yeah, they haven't rented the lobby.
Rent the lobby that same night.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, you can certainly put something up before town meeting, and the lobby in the hallway there.
Oh, yeah, well, before town meeting, that, you know.
Now, you've, you've heard about the community forum?
Yeah.
That we're having Thursday and Friday.
I'm gonna try to make Friday morning.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, we'll be there to answer any questions.
Okay.
And there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot, you know, I've learned so much about this whole process that.
Have you learned how interconnected our government is with businesses?
Is there a difference?
No, all right.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
All right, so, all right, so this is a placeholder.
Okay, yep. No, no, I mean, we'll sort of use this and check those two points, and we will move, I think, on the second one. I think you just agreed, we could use request rather than instruct for the state representatives on. You guys are okay with that?
At all.
I mean, it's, it's really.
Yeah. I sent out a thing, community talking points. It was done by, by Bolton. It was like a five-page.
Yeah, I haven't yet, I haven't yet looked at it yet.
Well, give it, it's, I think it's something that we can be very useful in working with the, by, um, public safety and conservation and all those committees.
I have it on.
They need to, they're thinking about negotiating or mitigating with Kinder Morgan even though, you know.
So Walter, are you gonna be there next Wednesday to represent conservation and harass them?
I'm gonna be there Thursday night for sure.
Oh, before, what?
Yeah, I'll, I'll show up Wednesday night.
Yeah, well, I hope, you know, I hope we have the representation.
Well, it's the FERC people too.
Oh, yeah, FERC.
They're the important ones that you can.
FERC will be there?
Yeah, there will be people there, and those are the ones that are most important.
So FERC will definitely be there.
There will be three or four people.
They said three or four.
For.
Well, that makes it.
And we only got this from the guy from, on the Bolton pipeline.
Yeah, because I hadn't heard.
Who's been going to some of these open houses.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your time, your volunteer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
She goods this.
All right.
Now, I have another life too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Come on down.
How's it going?
Good evening.
It's going. Better than the weather.
Thanks for your time, and nice to see you all again.
Nice to see you.
Always a pleasure to come to Berlin on a, on a night like this.
Absolutely. It's, I think, you know, we're beginning to make a dent in it. All right. You wanna just stately, state just briefly while, while you're here this time, 'cause we're on, we're on camera too, so that gives people a sense of what, what we're talking about?
Good evening. I'm Aiden Foley from Blue Wave Capital. I reside in Boston.
Derek Loomin with Blue Wave Capital reside in Boston as well.
And, um, Blue Wave Capital is working, hopefully, to develop a second project, sole project here in Berlin on, um, land that was owned by the town of Hudson that was previously used as a landfill. And we are here tonight to make respectful use of your time, which I know is in short supply, but to give you an update on the project, which we thought you'd be interested in, and also to promote a conversation about entering into a tax agreement for the project that should actually be developed, which we would hope the community was interested in that yet. It's obviously a voluntary agreement. Both parties are interested. Derek is closer to the project himself. We're both involved in our interaction with Hudson, who, we have a select board meeting with Hudson next week. We have business terms agreed with, we have business terms established with staff at the town of Hudson, and our hope is to meet with the, with the select board and enter into a, um, an agreement, which would be the first step of ultimately signing a lease with the town of Hudson for a sole private. And Berlin, most recently, Derek has been working with the planning board on a warrant article for town meeting related to zoning and so forth.
Is it your sense that the planning board will sponsor that article?
That is correct. That was in front of the planning board last week, and where they voted in favor of supporting a warrant article. Right now, just working with the board on, on finding the language. So as of this afternoon, I have responded email from the chairman, who had suggested some language, and we were in agreement with his suggestion, so just let him know that we were on board and.
Yeah, I only mention that because you'd have to run him around and get signatures without the sponsorship. Can you just tell us, you know, I mean, very briefly, what the article does that would enable this?
Absolutely, and it's also include the presentation of what, what we're seeking.
If you're gonna get to it anyway, don't. Yep. Yeah, and I think here, I mean, let's, let's focus on the, you know, on the stuff that we need to do, which is, you, you, you wanna get something on the annual town meeting, right?
That's correct.
So we'll, let's, let's sort of focus on those aspects. Okay?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Pardon me?
To focus on what we need to do in order to get it on the annual town meeting.
You mean, get the bylaw on?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, since I pushed for the first bylaw, because we were a great community, we needed to have a, a bylaw for renewables. If we put in the large-scale ground-mounted, which was only in limited.
Right.
So it looks like what this article's doing is letting you put it in under ARC with site review, but only in a cap landfill. Is that correct?
Yes, and that would also include a special permit as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And this is the, this is what's been reviewed with planning board?
We've gone through a couple of iterations, but as I mentioned, as of today, the chairman and I have been working on, on finding that language to get satisfaction.
So you need a bylaw change, and then we also need to do a pilot agreement. So you need a bylaw change, and then we also need to do a pilot agreement, is that correct, the two parts here?
Very much preferred on the pilot. And my thought is that if the bylaw change is successful, as we obviously hope it would be, the bylaw might be in place sometime in the August, September timeframe, so the project could be conceivably entitled shortly thereafter, because we would have some time to plan ahead. So we would have the possibility that we would have all of the pre-construction matters resolved by the end of this calendar year. So to avoid having to wait for 2016 town meeting, it would be preferable to have a tax agreement in place off of the 2015 town meeting.
And what is your feeling best start? And I don't, I don't, I don't know what my feeling is about that, but what is your feeling about starting with the pilot agreement that was established for the River Road?
Yeah, I think broadly, in terms of the form and the financial model used, we would be absolutely broadly in favor of that.
Okay.
The one point I would make is that the River Road West Agreement consolidated property tax, real property taxes and personal property taxes. And that was acceptable to all the parties involved because of the commercial agreement between the property owner and the tenants. The local developer, we brought in the capital partner, so we're part of that, as you may remember. This circumstance, because the land is owned by a community, by a municipality, and I believe they have an existing tax agreement that incorporates other sites, I think we would like to sever the concept of personal property and real property taxes. And that is something that the Department of Revenue actually recommends. The Department of Revenue prefers that the two taxes not be consolidated.
Okay.
The second point, I would, just bear in mind, this doesn't kind of go to the heart of your question, but the development cost of projects has reduced recently, the cost to build them, and the state, the Commonwealth Solar Program that supports the value of the projects has reduced the amount of support it gives the projects. So the sheer amount of revenue per megawatt that comes out of a financial model for a project dated to start construction in March of 2016 rather than March of 2014, so it's going to be about a two-year difference. It already worked out to probably be about a two-year difference in the development time, start, construction start for each project. So the numbers that would come out of the model with then current inputs would probably be lower, so that, you know, I wouldn't, just to sort of set--
You mean, the financial yield of the project would be lower?
Yeah. Projects cost less to build, developers make less money, the revenue for the projects is less, everything is, is lower. And that's, that's the plan, the whole, all of the incentives around the projects is based on them having less and less incentives and becoming more and more cost competitive over time, and that's, that's happening.
Okay.
I would just be cognizant that--
Yep, yep, yep.
That might happen, that might--
Okay.
Well, and our issue is, we currently are looking for an assessor, so at this point, in fact, they're coming in next.
They just, just, they're going to come back next week, but they just wanted to say that they have two finalists.
Okay.
That's the gist of their update for now.
Okay.
So--
Is there, does that, how does that affect the request on the table? Is it possible to process it with, is the assessor's position vacant?
And I don't think--
And that's one of the reasons I was asking about consistency with the previous deal, obviously, if we're pitching in and have to tweak this or that, or this or that, but if it, you know. The timeframe on the pilot project, pilot contract would be?
In terms of signing it?
Mm-hmm.
We would be willing and able to execute it pretty quickly, it would be after town meeting. The, any--
But we have between now and May to finalize it. Yep, okay.
If, if, we don't actually have, we don't fully understand what has to be delivered by March ninth versus what has to be ready, but I do remember there was some negotiating on the dollar amount was going on right up until our discussions, up until the meeting.
Yep, we can talk to town council about what needs to go on.
Well, March ninth, we can put a placeholder in for you.
Right, to vote on a pilot agreement as presented to the annual, to the annual town meeting. We certainly want, I think, to have something by the time we put out, you know, the agenda and the booklet for the meeting, but we don't have to have an agreement by March ninth. Okay? Well, I'm certainly willing to put that kind of article on if there's a recommendation from the planning board to put a zoning article.
It would have to be sponsored by--
Well, they, they're going to be, they're going to be sponsoring a zoning article, and I think that the pilot agreement just sort of follows that.
I mean, the zoning article needs to be--
Yes, that's what I said, if it's being put on by--
So they need to put something in by the ninth.
Right. Okay.
We believe, have we taken all of action we, that's expected of us to have, for that to happen? Were--
It was voted on at the last planned working, last Tuesday, and just working through the language.
Okay. Then we can, we can put on a, an article for the pilots agreement.
Are there, other aspects of the product, about what you, you have questions? I think we've--
Any, any conversations with the butters, any sense of that?
Yeah, to date, we have not reached out to the butters. We've been waiting to ensure that the town of Hudson was going to execute the MOU, and so once that's completed--
Okay.
A little bit of a chicken or the egg here, but we have expressed to the planning board, and will, the C P as well, once that's accomplished, we'll reach out to the butters and set up a public meeting, so we can go over the details of the project and then take any feedback from the butters, then--
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because it's important to get those things out sooner rather than later, so you can make--
You might have it in here, but just size-wise, how's it compare to the River Road site? How many acres would it be? I'm just curious.
It's more compact in acreage. The megawatts, we're looking at at the moment, 2.75 versus 3.8.
Oh, yeah.
So, not far off in megawatts.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely more compact.
Same technology and everything?
Probably, probably not necessarily the same panel as an inverter, but that, the solar panels are something of a commodity to be, you know, like a Toyota Corolla versus a Nissan Versa, whatever the same is. People don't get to work out about one versus the other.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
Wouldn't say it's a question, we're, we're very happy to engage in discussions with the town about purchasing the energy. I know this was something that's come up once or twice. We, we are prepared to discuss the energy off-take with various communities, and if reserving a little bit for a potential discussion with the town was of interest, appealing, we'd certainly want to do that.
I think it would be, don't you?
No, we're talking about, I mean, we could. Right now, we're talking about making contracts with Hampshire Council of Governments.
That's one of the things we're looking at, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly look at what you can offer.
And I, would the Energy Committee willing, be willing to have the initial discussions on that?
Sure.
Okay.
So would be the appropriate next steps there, would it be to arrange a meeting, or to provide a proposal?
Why don't you provide a proposal, and we'll set up a meeting, and you could go through the proposal?
Very good. And we have the select board's email address, would that be the right?
Yep, and I'll distribute it to them.
Great.
You do know that we're only like, well, let me say, I was going to say we're about 675,000 kilowatts, but that includes the school, which would be a separate, because they're, they'd have to be approved by the school committee, it's not something that we, as the select board, could do. And I think they're about 250 of that? I don't know, I'd have to look.
Well, it'd be helpful to see that in equivalent timeframe, preparing a proposal, but we can work the generalities with that in mind.
I can send you, we, we're, we put everything in Mass Energy in sight, so if you give me your email, I can email you a, a report from that, giving you our usage for, I don't know, the last five years.
But I had a sense that the overall, that matches what I had in mind, except I didn't realize that there was a school district to Berlin, I thought it was all shared.
Well, it's, it's, it's the Berlin--
It's the town plus the regional school district.
Well, it's, it's the town-school district, but we still, they have their own budget. They're controlled by the school committee, not by the select board, so we can't tell them we've made this deal for your electricity, because--
We could vote to instruct them. Yeah, that would work.
So you want me to send you, I'll send you--
Yep, and I'm going to give you Derek's, Derek's card as well.
I can, I can send an email, I can also give you the email to the school finance committee, the school finance person, but I do know she's on vacation this week.
Okay. So we'll, we're actually in the process of, one of our customers asked us for an opportunity to weigh more energy, so we're in the process of preparing a proposal for them, so this is good timing, I can provide basically equivalent proposal, and I can also make sure that we, at least while we have the conversation, have reserved some capacity, because that's a, that's a large city that would have the ability to use all of the energy.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we, I think we've told you earlier, yep, felt we wanted to, but are you good in terms of questions or updates?
Yeah, I think we are right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we're looking for an article from the planning board, and we will add broad authorization for the pilot.
When, when do you need to see us again, or when do we actually have the discussions that lead up to the, the details of the warrant, what would be presented to the town?
Well, the first thing, you already know, I mean, that will be, that will be whatever the planning board sponsors and submits. I would suggest, give us a couple of weeks on the pilot, and let's see what our resource, you know, situation is with that, okay?
Very good.
Okay.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Yes. Take a short break.
Sure.
Who's the reimbursement due, the guy whose car was disabled?
This is, yeah, we're discussing a claim on a motor vehicle accident involving snow removal equipment of the town, and a question was asked whether the other party in the accident was entitled to reimbursement for car rental expense, as we understand it, the investigation of the accident is not yet complete, and what we, what we're considering doing is, you know, sending this to Maya, who ought to be able to say that if, if it is determined that the, the town vehicle was--
At fault.
Was at fault, what the insurance coverage would be under the, under the liability.
Okay.
Okay?
Next question is, the cemetery commission has to, we've got to do some work on the shed down at South Cemetery, needs re-roofing, and in the event that volunteers don't do it, and we get into July and August, the highway department has the time, and we can find all the materials, can we do that?
Yeah, I think we've never, we've never had any problem with that sort of thing, right?
No.
Nope. It'll be July before the snow melts.
I know.
I'm saying, we're going to have a white Christmas next year from the snow that we still have this year.
Do you want to take a vote on that?
You, you did want to vote, Walter, on that, just to formalize it?
Well, I remember you had to, did they vote when I was in here, and they all that baloney there? Yeah, I would move that we allow the highway department to work on a--
Assist the roof--
The equipment shed? Yeah.
At the South Cemetery?
The equipment shed in South Cemetery.
All right.
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Didn't we sign this last week?
Yep, or two ago.
Yeah.
Walter, this is the conservation commission.
So are we signing it again?
Yeah, it's just a duplicate--
Yeah, they, I know I said it this week, and they misplaced it, so we'll have to sign it again, that's all.
All right.
I have, I have a copy of it, but I kept a copy, but the original has disappeared.
All right. And it was originally signed two weeks ago?
Yeah, at least.
I don't have a copy of it. No, is that what you mean?
I do at home.
Is there any reason why we need to backdate it or date it?
No, no, there isn't. The night's date is--
All right. And today is the 17th?
Yes.
All right. We have a letter, a--
That's a tie-breaking letter on the Batuminus concrete.
Absolutely. As was indicated in an email, we had a situation which we had two bidders in the sealed bid who came out with exactly the same price, and looking at the procurement, state procurement manual from the inspector general, one could go through calling them both in and doing a flip of the coin and so on, which seemed kind of silly, or you can go out for a second heat and ask them to bid. And so they're, for it's seeming to be the most sensible, just to go out for the second run, so I guess I'm asking for a vote to issue this invitation to the two tied bidders to participate in a second heat for the bid for Batuminus concrete for the town.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
You need to sign that.
We didn't, we didn't vote on that last time, no, we just talked about the concept and wrote that. I thought we made a decision, I was just curious.
But you wanted it read, but I didn't have a letter prepared.
Oh, just, okay, yeah.
Okay.
And then we have a series of no-thanks letters to the other--
The top one with green is the awarding for reclamation, and the others are the no-thanks letters.
Which we've already awarded, which is just notification, correct?
I didn't see that in the minutes that you actually awarded.
Okay, well, well, okay. Let's vote to award the contract for full-depth pavement reclamation per bid dated February 4th, 2015.
Is that the only bid we got?
No, there were several, that's why there's only several no-thanks letters.
At $2.04 a square yard to All States Asphalt Inc., which was the low bidder.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, take a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
And then we have notifications to the losing bidders.
Okay.
I think those are all for your autograph, Ms. Loomin. We have an item, electrical inspector letter--
You want that letter to him?
I just wanted her to write that up to clarify that we did not change the fees.
Okay.
He actually visited today and wanted on the status of where his request stood. And I said, you know, he's on the agenda for tonight, but--
Yeah.
It was for increase, wasn't it?
This was to change everything to be commercial.
Just leave it.
We decided that we would just leave it the way it was.
Right.
And this is just clarifying fact.
All right, so, yes, so shall we vote to, to issue this letter that agreed and reaffirm that the electrical speculums shall not labor from the March 1st, 2010 version previously approved?
So moved.
The only varication was that across the board, 3% surcharge imposed on all building electrical plumbing gas permits. The only variation was across-the-board 3% surcharge imposed on all building electrical plumbing gas permits effective July 1st, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
And, any comments or questions? Hearing none, take a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This is a note to the town accountant regarding town employees affected by the minimum wage increase effective 1-1-2015.
She requested that.
That's fine. Voted to authorize at our February 17th, 2015, meeting increases to $9 per hour for the following town employees. The personnel committee acknowledge and confirms the town of Berlin is not subject to the Massachusetts Minimum Wage Law effective January 1st, 2015. But has opted, and we did as the personnel committee, to nonetheless increase the lowest earners to $9 per hour effective January 1st, 2015.
So this is a vote you're taking as a personnel committee?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? I mean, we talked about this before, and I thought we actually voted it before.
Yeah.
When we voted the.
Keep the grid.
The grid?
Yep.
Yeah, but that's.
Yep.
Did I do that?
No.
I'm starting to get tired.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have here a resolution to seek lower electric rates in a competitive market.
Last week, the Energy Committee met with the Hampshire Council on Governments, and we discussed an aggregate, buying an aggregate energy contract with them. You can see, well, we all signed it. So what this does is give the selectmen the ability to negotiate in a contract with Hampshire Council on Governments to buy electricity for the whole town of Berlin, residents and businesses. If you don't want them, you have an opportunity to opt out. Um, if you already have a third-party electrical supplier, you will not be changed over to them. So, this needs to be done.
And this was requested by the Energy Committee?
Yes.
Okay.
And this has already been approved by Copelman and Page.
Cool.
Because there's like thirty other, thirty-nine other towns.
Excellent, that's fine.
Dot the i's and cross the t's.
I would move to put it on the agenda for the annual town meeting.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have here.
I just moved, we passed over that.
Okay.
I don't wanna read it anyway, 'cause there's nothing to read. So, everything's all right, it's moving along.
Okay. All right. Okay, the next thing we have is an endorsement for Berlin Planning Board contact with Marlborough Planning Board, RE Master Plan, Solomon Pond, Donald Lynch Boulevard Development Plans. I certainly have no objection to that.
I don't know what it means, but I don't object.
I moved that we endorse the Berlin Planning Board's meeting with the Marlborough Planning Board to discuss what's going on in Donald Lynch Boulevard, they're apparently.
Solomon Pond.
Yeah, Solomon Pond.
No, I think it's a good idea. You seconded?
Seconded.
All right, any further comments, questions?
Yeah, one thing, you probably know about it, but they, one thing the planning board was a little realized, Marlborough, when they're promoting development, they advertise Berlin for executive housing. Berlin is a place to go for, for executive housing, and so it, that helps. So they wanted, well, they needed a little discussion, so they wanted to.
Okay. All right. Yes, a call for a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
The, the next one, I just heard back from Don Lowe. The March 4th date fell apart for Bolton, so the two dates that they'd like you to consider is either March 3rd or their February 26th meeting of their board of selectmen. So the Tuesday, March 3rd would be strictly for this topic, and the other one would be during one of their meetings.
I thought somebody couldn't make the February 26th.
You know, I'm gonna be gone both of those dates, so, um, you know, go ahead, you don't need three of us there. You want to pick one delegate.
So one's a Thursday, the 26th, and March 3rd is a Tuesday.
And the February 26th is an evening, I presume?
Yeah, that's a nighttime meeting.
It's their board of selectmen meeting.
Yeah, I, I assumed, but I just wanted.
I don't know for a fact if it's, I'm sorry.
I presume they're evening.
Okay.
Kinder Morgan meeting is the night before, does that makes any difference on the 25th?
Well, I gotta say, I wasn't, you know, until I found out FERC was gonna be there, but. The 26th. Well, I could probably make that. The 3rd, I don't really know at this point, I think. It would be during the day?
No.
Oh, at night?
Well, I don't know. Thursday, the 26th, is a selectmen's meeting of the Bolton Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, March 3rd, what time?
Is a Tuesday night. That's all Tom Gowan could ever tell me was night.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I could probably make either of those, I'm sorry, when, I was thinking during the day, and it was harder for me to.
I could double check.
Okay.
I can make either of them, but I would like to know soon, because slots are filling up.
Yep.
Okay, let me nail down, do you have no preference for one or the other? Just tell them either, get the dates timed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, one's the day after the Kinder Morgan, the other's the day after our meeting, so, okay.
Would you sign up for reading at the school on March 4th?
Uh, because while I still don't know whether I can do it, I'm in the middle of a bunch of stuff at work that make it harder for me to be, to know I can be flexible that far ahead of time, that's the problem. Okay, we're into miscellaneous correspondence, is there anything that somebody, anybody sees that is?
So did we get resolution to the beekeeping question?
Yeah, remember, there's, there's a, a response back from Maya saying that the town is leasing the land, it's a nine-year lease, right, then the activities upon it would be covered on the town point of view, but they said if a separate business was gonna be running the beekeeping operation, then they should present the town with a certificate of insurance.
A separate outfit?
Well, who actually owns the bees? It's not gonna be town on bees, it's supposed to be a separate Berlin business that's gonna be, or, or end to person who's gonna put the bees on there, so the suggestion back from Maya was that person have.
Bee insurance?
And this is because of what?
Community garden.
No, 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 I know that, because of, but what perceived liability?
Somebody went over there and got stung?
I think that the, Maya is perceiving that it's a business, or someone would be taking the honey out of it and possibly selling it or something, so whoever's benefiting from the bees.
But what is the liability that we're concerned with? Somebody gets stung?
I guess so, I mean, that's why I asked you, geez, if that's what Maya's answer is, what do you think is an adequate amount of insurance coverage for them to present back to the town?
I presume that somebody goes over and kicks the bee thing over and gets a zillion stings on it.
Well, if they're allergic to it and they die.
And they die.
Kid becomes allergic and dies, I don't know, I mean.
There are bees all over the place, you know.
Right.
Okay.
So I, I sent that to Carl Wickstrom, saying that this person, I think it's Dan Diana, would be asked to present back an insurance binder.
There go the bees.
Yeah, whatever.
I don't, is it necessary?
That's, Maya's recommendation is that, whoever's bringing the bees onto the property gives the town.
Okay.
They would say that anyway.
Okay. Anything else?
Is there something else you'd like done on that? I mean, I could just tell Carl.
Nope.
Okay.
We already spent too much time on it.
Okay.
Food pantry report.
Okay.
I'm just curious how many, now that we've heard, um, we.
Fifty-six people, twenty-five families. Ten who, families who came twice.
So, you know, it's possible that the families that come here, come to Berlin, also go over to.
Absolutely, and as a matter of fact, it's sort of the same order of magnitude.
Yeah.
That you're talking about. Yep. Okay.
Okeydoke.
Anything else? Mary, it's good to have you back.
Oh, thank you. Nice to be back.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing, I've been thinking a little bit about this, um, the MRI report on public safety was supposed to be back in three months, basically, as I read it. That's coming up pretty quick, I think. Does anybody?
Can we check?
How do we get a status?
Bruce sent me a list of the things they asked them for.
List of collected stuff, but we can ask for a status.
Yeah, but it was, it was big.
Yeah, I would like to have in this town meeting warrant article, an article to adopt the chapter, which is a week chief, and do away with the Board of Fire Engineers. I think we're gonna reorganize and set up. I don't think we want the same thinking that got us to where we are. And I think that we get a chief reporting as a selectman, and just more direct, constant accountability. I don't, this autonomous stuff is, it's a systemic issue, really, is a problem that got us where we are. But there are other some, other tendencies too that are big problems. I'd like to have an article into adopt the week chief law.
I thought we agreed last week that we would do this in a special town meeting.
Yeah, I, I mean, people can change their mind, I gave it some thought. I mentioned earlier how we sit at a meeting and discuss something and one.
Um, well, I'm, I'm still in favor of doing it in a special town meeting.
I may, well, I may tend citizenly.
You can do it as a citizens' petition. Yep.
I mean, the problem with that is that you end up with this kind of incomplete department.
Incomplete department, getting rid of the Board of Fire Engineers isn't an incomplete department.
No, so who's gonna be the chief?
Well, we keep the chief on there, and, but he said he comes under the chapter, I've got the chapter and section.
Yeah, I, I think the thing should be done.
It's one piece.
It's one, one piece, and it should be done in a special town meeting, and so I wouldn't certainly, citizens can put any, any old petition on, but I certainly wouldn't put one on.
Yeah, well, we will do it, because if that one move, we wouldn't have hired MRI, the problems would have been solved years ago, and I think we'll do it. So we'll probably have that article on.
Remember, it's March 9th.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Hearing nothing, I would gladly accept a vote to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments on that? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.